Call order and happy to hope for our roll call.
Mr. Elbrae?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Sir.
Really? Here. Mr. Greater X?
Here.
Ms. Ganga? Here. Mr. Lunding?
Here.
Where? Here. Mr. Nanton?
Here.
Mr. Del?
Here.
All right, so we will move on to the meeting minutes. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? During no discussion, we'll vote to approve the agenda. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from October 18th through 2021, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, so meeting minutes are approved. Next is the approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda is extended.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? During no discussion, we'll vote to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The agenda has been approved. Moving on to the next item of our agenda, which is school presentations, of which there are none, so we'll go on to public participation, more public comments. Each meeting has a lot of the maximum of five minutes, or a total of thirty minutes, unless otherwise notified. At this point, we're meeting those interested in making their comments. We ask to raise their hands so that time may be divided equally. I do have one green sheet that has been filled out so far. If any speaker would like to speak, it is helpful for you to fill out the green sheet, especially if you want a response. You will be asked to announce your name and the district of residence and indicate if you represent any organization or agency. No person may speak more than once to the same subject during a single meeting. And those wishing, as I said, to receive a personal response from the board or the superintendent must complete a public comment or a field call at the entrance or on our website. I have one green sheet so far, so I can start with Carissa Keller.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First off, after the October 18th Board of Ed meeting, I was milling around the hallway with a couple of her parents. Trustee Elbrae walked by and stopped to ask for some clarification about one of the topics I mentioned. I would like to thank you, Trustee Elbrae, for taking the time and to be interested in hearing me. I truly appreciate that, so thank you. I feel like having those conversations is one of the ways this district can come together and heal. Okay, so last meeting, I brought up a few concerns and asked for an email response. I filled out the green form to follow procedure in order to receive a response. I'd like to do a little follow-up tonight. As a quick reminder, my concerns went a little like this. First, I asked if this board has discussed uniting to pressure the Michigan Association of School Boards, the MASB, to separate ties with the National School Board Association, the NSBA. I respectfully asked then, and will continue to ask, that you do your part to aid in the withdrawal from this national group that has proven itself to be a group that is divisive and controversial. Secondly, the district website. Last meeting, I asked about the two parent resource tabs that were under construction for the first six weeks of school. One of the tabs marked under construction was the mental health resources tab for parents. Sadly, I went and looked, and that tab has now been removed. I do hope that maybe that can be updated to help maybe support those parents in the district who may need that help for their students. The other tab was for the reproductive health tab, the other tab that was still under construction, six weeks into the school year. And I did check on that, and since the last meeting, there has been an update. Some pretty generic verbiage, essentially indicating that parents are given notice of when reproductive health classes will be taught, and that materials are available for review in each school's office and/or during an evening meeting that is held prior to instruction. So are parents even allowed in the buildings to obtain these materials? Generic verbiage on the website, have a look-see. At the very least, it's an improvement from the, you know, this tab is under construction. But why no transparency on this issue? Especially for a class that's available in grades four through 12 in this district. Lastly, I had asked if a parent resources tab could be added to the high school portion to help high school parents maybe navigate a bit easier. Curious if there's any updates on that, or if that's a possibility. Lastly, the other meeting, I asked if this district could maybe get organized and to livestream these meetings for parents unable to attend. I did specifically ask for responses, and I did, so thank you for the responses. And I just want to share the responses. From Trustee Greater X, the email to me went as this. "Thank you for speaking about your concerns at the Board of Ed meeting last night. I will look into the concerns you raised about MASB and NSBA. The live streaming and tech issues are something that, as you know, have been ongoing. In order to provide quality video and audio, the solution that has worked has been to record the meeting and post it later. Dr. Timis will get back to you on the concerns about the website." So final answer, there's no way to figure this out? So I guess that's my question. My response from Dr. Timis about the concerns I raised, go as such. "Mrs. Keller, thank you for speaking at the DCS board meeting on Monday. We appreciate your input, and the board will take your comments under consideration." So those are the responses I got. Would really appreciate an email that actually addresses and answers my questions. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Have a good evening.
I'll submit my green sheet. I'm a little unprepared tonight. It's been a busy fall. My name is Holly Cabana. I've been a Dexter resident for, oh, I don't know, 25 years. I just have some very specific concerns and questions that I want to bring up. One of my major concerns is that at the high school, the bathrooms are locked during passing time. I understand that we have been fighting some sort of vandalism issue. I understand that that's a concern. I just want to make sure that we are, I would just like to know if there are any measures that are being taken, whether it be cameras or disciplinary action, or have we found out who the offenders are, you know, things of that sort. It concerns me very much. Another question I have regarding that is in terms of if it's like, I know my son has told me specifically that he has seen the ramifications of the vandalism in the boys' restroom. I'm wondering, is it also a problem in the girls', or could maybe the girls' restrooms be open? I'm concerned about, you know, girls who are dealing with their menstrual cycle and want to take care of that, not during class time. They would have to miss class time in order to deal with that. Also, I know of a couple kids in particular, right off the top of my head, who are dealing with anxiety, and one of the issues is having to go to the bathroom often. And I just would rather that they not miss class time for that, if at all possible. So I just wanted to bring that to the forefront of everyone's understanding that that is an issue at the high school, and I would just like to know if something's being done about that. I'm sure, you know, I'm sure there is something, but I just, I don't know what that is, and I just would like that addressed, please. The other thing I'd like to talk about is just, I'm really concerned as cold and flu season is approaching, and some really basically horrible stories that I've heard in terms of what our quarantine protocol is for the COVID issues. It doesn't seem like there is a clear-cut anything. It seems like communication among all the people in charge of the whole quarantining and how to get back into school and everything involved, and I know it's a mess, and I understand that everybody has their hands full, but I'm concerned that as we are approaching more indoor sports and the cold and flu season, I just, I'm concerned that it's going to be just a hot mess. I'm concerned about kids missing class time, not having the Zooming options this year. I just, I have so many concerns about, are there some things in place to help these kids when they are forced out of school? Especially like some sort of Zooming or something that, so that kids aren't falling behind. I also am just not understanding why we're demanding vaccination papers when many of the cases at Dexter High School in particular have come from kids who are vaccinated. That's another concern that I have. Finally, just real quickly, I don't know how much time I have left. I've also gotten wind of some student surveys that are very concerning. Why we would have to ask kids what their political affiliation is, and some personal information on these school surveys that are being handed out in classes. I just, I have concerns about my children giving personal information that doesn't apply directly to their education. And a specific question about that is, is there a specific opt-out procedure that parents can, you know, follow up with so that their children don't have to be, don't have to deal with those sorts of surveys? Thank you so much. I'll submit my green sheet in a little bit.
Thank you to those who've spoken tonight. Are there any others who wish to speak? Okay, seeing no one rushing with a green sheet in their hand or a word in the podium, we move on to administrative and board updates. So I will over to Dr. K.
First off, the state of the school district is scheduled for Thursday, November 4th of this week at seven o'clock. More to join that work home, catch here and start them to do that. We are working with a group to, in the Health Department, for vaccination clinic for five to 11-year-olds. Anywhere that's, I always like to be able to turn their own soon as Friday, but it's not, it looks like that. We had our first alternative education student graduate today, finished all their classes, who's been on to watch the community, so that was great. Not great, as we had to report, we are going to be on the state outbreak list for Jenkins. We have an outbreak among kids and staff in every classroom. The survey was referred to, we found out about later in the day-to-day, it was supposed to be a student sent it out, it was like, that should have never been sent out.
We can't hear you guys.
Quarantine procedures are dictated by the county health department. And last, going forward to the dashboard. Guys, hear about the survey?
No, no, we didn't hear anything. Thank you.
We had an alternative education student graduate today, Jenkins. We have an outbreak among Jenkins, kids and staff. We had a survey go out, there was supposed to be a student club that sent it, and it went out from, not from the student club, it should have never gone out, the club probably shouldn't have sent it out either. We have a vaccination clinic planned for five to 11-year-olds as soon as Friday, maybe next week. State of the school district is on November 4th. Quarantine procedures are determined by the Health Department, we don't have a choice. At our dashboard for this year, we have eighty-four total student cases today, twelve staff. Last year, we had ninety-five and twenty all year.
All right, so moving on to the board president's update. I just wanted to update about the Senate Bill 82 that was passed in late September. It was, states that a local health officer has the emergency order under section 2453 of the Public Health Code, nineteen seventy-eight, PA 368, MCL 33.2453, in effect as of October 1st, 2021, the funds appropriated in Part One, where essential local public health services are unappropriated, the subsection does not apply. If the county board of commissioners passes a non-binding resolution by a record roll called to support any emergency orders of the local health officer, has in effect on October 1st of the current fiscal year. So Senate Bill 82 does not include any reference to the authority of schools. The Dexter School Board of Education is an elected body that serves this community. We take our role to provide students in the district an outstanding education in a safe environment seriously. The back-to-school COVID nineteen mitigation plan that the board passed in August requires that students eight through twelve wear masks when the transition level in the county is moderate, low or high. And Washington County's transition level is currently high. We have stated several times that one of our goals this year is to keep students in school. Mask requirements are helping us achieve this goal. We have significantly lower numbers of positive student cases than districts surrounding areas without a mask requirement. So I just wanted to update you as to, we're based on Senate Bill 82. And that's all I have for the board president update. So I will move it on to the student representative update.
So I guess I'll start with Hall Baker. He signs a lot, came in from kindergarten to animals. First graders from doing science experiments with pumpkins and tigers and tigers. And then on Friday, their annual holiday, they play at the place. And then finally, firefighters came in, taught fire safety. Fourth graders in council is wrapping up their conference of how we put this school in. And school, the whole is focusing on increasing rates. And then moving on to other schools. Right now, going on, I come up with parent teacher conferences, that's a big thing in all schools right now, specifically in the high school, the principals and vice principals have gone around to interview students, give government positions, state government, that sort of thing. And in high school right now, there is a student advisory board going around, so there's more local government happening right now, and it's a good time for schools.
Thank you, Ellen. All right, we will move on to our consent items. We have two. We have a request for leave with the personnel, and we have a resignation.
I move that the board of education.
It is being moved and seconded that we approve the consent items in bulk. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, we will vote on that to prove that we bulk. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, it is the action item, which is the MASB Delegate Assembly Resolutions. We all got a copy of the resolutions of the last meeting, it's homework. So we can discuss those, and myself and Jennifer, who's the operative, will take that up to the delegate assembly that is on November number eleven. So if there are any, if you wish to indicate if there are any resolutions that you want to discuss, you can bring that up.
I move that the board of education authorized the assembly voting delegates to align the school's educational goals and policies. I'll second.
Seconded, is there any discussion?
Yeah. I guess I just want to make it on, but I did appreciate the opportunity to read through all resolutions and read through all changes. I think it's just a really great reminder that MASB is very much made up of its member communities and member school boards, and that what we as a board care about and want to see is reflected in these resolutions. And I was very pleased with how well they align with a lot of policy changes that we have made in our community over the last year.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. I noticed that there were some very similar changes that we've already done in other policies as well. Without having anything to add to the discussion? Okay. Nothing? You're all just putting in. All right, so. Yes, we need to vote. There weren't anything that we really, there wasn't anything to be individually, there weren't any individual resolutions, so it would just be a bulk?
There were two in there, so we choose the one that is.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
If you want to take the resolution again?
Sure. So I move that the board of education authorized the assembly voting delegates to pass votes that align the sector to the school's educational goals and policies. So no changes to the proposed rule.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's how we will go. All right, moving on to our next opportunity for public participation. Oh, sorry. Oh, we have. We're moving on to our next discussion item, which is.
In, the green button down. So. Probably want to talk. So on Friday, the Washington County Health Department updated their mask, or their mask ordinance, which included a carve-out for winter athletics. In their winter athletics update, or in the ordinance, they referred to indoor athletics and performing arts guidance. And in that guidance, they make a few statements that, and they give some flexibility for districts. So what they put in here, one of the pieces to make to stand out, and I'll go up to the top here, is that they put in a clause that says, "Final decisions about individual school district exemptions to the mask order are made by the head administrator, superintendent, or head of school, in case of law to private schools, and apply to the entire school community for extracurricular sports and performing arts only. Individual athletes, artists, or staff cannot make other decisions. Where there is no specific exemption, the mask order applies. The head administrator may not exempt masking for spectators, for classroom activities, for example, physical education or band, or for students and staff in locker rooms, weight rooms, or on school buses, or other school transportation." So what I'd like to talk about, get board feedback on, and let's figure out what we do, this was released Friday. Many boards, they don't meet till Wednesday of this week or next week, so we just had a short turnaround, and we don't meet again for a couple weeks. What I would recommend, if the board authorizes that allows me to make the decision, here's what I would recommend, but I need you guys to talk about what, if you're first okay with that, is that fans still wear the masks because we don't have a carve-out that's required in the order. Coaches still have to wear masks, that's required in the order. MHSA is going to provide us some more information either this week or next week. I'm not anticipating, based on where the state is and what's happening around the state, that they're going to say that players have to wear masks, they're probably, I'm guessing, they're going to kind of walk a pretty fine line. We would recommend players on the bench wear a mask, players on the court, in the pool, or in competition do not unless they choose to. That, there's some clauses in here for testing of athletes. I would like to not test athletes. We did seven thousand tests last year and had seven positives. Locker rooms, they wear a mask that's not carved out. Drama and music performances that they practice with the mask, but when they're actively performing, they can remove them outside of the school day. So if they're in school, they need to wear it. Sometimes in the performances, they're performing for a minute or two, and then they're out, and they should put it back on when they're kind of hanging out. Weight room and locker rooms still wear masks. So when we look at our conference, when our kids travel in our athletic conference, when they go to Monroe, Bedford, Adrian, Tecumseh, Jackson, and Pinkney, there's no mask ordinance in those counties, so there's no requirement to wear a mask when they're playing, it's optional. What we've seen, the kids try to wear it, it does fall down when they're actively playing, but they try. So looking at it, as we've talked amongst the other SEC schools in the county, the majority would do something similar to this, when they're on the court, or the pool, obviously, or when they're wrestling, et cetera, that, and they're in active competition, including practices when they're in active competition, that it's not required. So I'd like the board to hear what you think, and if you, it's up to you, I crafted a sample resolution, if you want to move forward, if not, you can always table it, we just keep wearing masks.
So I have a question. On the court, let's say that most of these schools follow suit and don't require any to be there. Is it the home court rules that applies to the in-armour schools?
Correct. It's whatever the, whatever the county ordinance is, or the local school's rules are. Supersede the school, if two schools in the same county have different policies, or different, the way the county wrote it was this paragraph right here, I took it right out of there. Final decisions about individual school districts, that was their exact clause, that was their opt-out. Part of their challenge is, we're going to watch U of M games, basketball games, we're going to watch Eastern games, we're going to watch Concordia games, they're not going to be worse, yet in the high schools in the county, they will. That's one of their challenges. Volleyball, they knew was the only one indoor sport in the fall, so it was kind of a, let's see what's happening. They're at the point now, they're going, you know, it's a lot of indoor sports, what do you, how do you carve out wrestling? Because you can't wrestle on a mask. How do you carve that out? But then say that in the gym right there with the basketball players, that they have to wear it.
The testing, health report is regardless, some come to go something last year, right? So we're saying go test it, which is fine with, but they do have symptoms and they're not vaccinated, you have to test. Correct? I just want to make sure that's clear, I don't want to have any confusion.
Yeah, we still do our screening, so if they have symptoms, we advise the family to go get them tested and not come. The county rules that they're sitting still, same thing that they've done in the fall, is that if there is a positive case in athletics on a team, that the whole team gets quarantined unless they're vaccinated. And then we worked with them successfully on this last one, so we have some players because of another sport that they're allowing us to do the test to stay with the kids this week. So we've been working with them on some options, that was the first they've allowed.
That's kind of along the lines of my question, which is, the way that this resolution or suggestive resolution, well, the direction from the county is saying that we can do whatever we want, if we empower you to do so. So what, can I agree with?
It is a disadvantage for kids to have to wear a mask when the other team isn't having to wear the mask, I mean, it's hard to communicate, et cetera, et cetera. That said, we want to make sure that we don't have to quarantine, so what, what's the procedure? What, what, what do you envision for the procedure for that going forward?
The quarantine rules would stay exactly the same whether our athletes were masked or unmasked while they're computing. The health department is to require unvaccinated athletes to quarantine. And those that are vaccinated would not have to, they have to monitor symptoms.
Can't change, can't override that.
No, they, they make the quarantine rules.
Thank you, that's exactly my question. So I guess, I mean, everyone knows that I prefer to be lower risk rather than higher risk. That being said, I get that people are tired and I get this is a way to begin. I would note that the college students are likely vaccinated, and so that is the difference that I see. And I would like to be thoughtful about the fact that if we start having problems, that this is something we can be rolling out. Because our goal as the board, and it's always been, keep the people in school and do not spreading this. My concern is having lots of indoor and outdoor athletes going to classes around the school and spreading COVID. That's the thing I would like to avoid, so I would like to just be really thoughtful about, you know, numbers and seeing things as they will allow and seeing changes. And perhaps even to the extent where we send something out to the outdoor athletes from the beginning, reminding everyone vaccination is your biggest protection, here are the board's rules, the school needs maintenance, and you may have to hold this back if you receive problems. Just so that everyone feels really clear on what we're accepting, what the results are going to be, who we'll do on our team, or on the team you're playing against, even a positive. Because I feel like, one of the things that I hear a lot of the community is that I'm being careful, I'm being protective. And this is about more than just our community and our friends when we're going to other schools and other communities. I will continue to say, the disease of the air war, we can't do anything, I mean, you can do everything right and still get sick. So the, the viable is again, to make sure a student isn't up here and gets their.
I follow up as well, I think that's really important, and I don't know if this is how we can do this, but if there were a way to have a zoom link available for kids that have quarantine, or that, you know, that are out ill, that just the impacts of quarantine are very difficult for kids to stay up with their homework and and we know that medical health is one of our focuses, and we want to do to support stronger mental health. And so making a child stay home while I understand the, the need for it, it it could, it could be very detrimental to a child, to students.
Okay, I, I think that the college's that rules makes sense.
I, I think it's just a pragmatic, I, I think it's pragmatic, I think it's, it makes sense to not require the players on courts. And we saw that last year, and we heard those complaints of how that is difficult, when the kids are really running around and, and that's difficult, we don't want to compound that. But I know, we're, we're figuring out a balance, and I think that this approach really makes a lot of sense. You know, to give, give the relief where it needs to be and, and to require it where it's not at all right. So I, I like, I like what you've laid out here.
Just to add to that, I know, so from personal experience, my son is a swimmer, and so obviously last year, they had a almost full season, they had a kind of break. And they did the same thing where they were on the bench, they had masks on, and then they walked to, they were starting walking with their masks off and and same precautions, and it worked really well. I mean, it's obvious with a swimmer that they're not going to swim on the outside, but I mean, I would think it would be. So I think it worked well before, and I think that this is something that we can get, get through with. And I, I recognize what you said, and that it is, it is, you know, proceeding with passion because we are mixing with other communities, but I, you know, I think with people with passion, it makes sense. Add to the discussion? So I guess what we want to, do we want to think about this, or do we want to move on it?
I believe whatever applies to the path, I know that all the resources that I can believe, I also recognize that the next board meeting is actually a board workshop. So by talking back to them, we'd be well into it, so I think we probably need to take action. Because it probably is not the format. Authorized superintendent, please, we'll call them, we see here, operating under the W C H D guidance regarding indoor sports, performing arts.
We have to move to an active item first. Okay. So the resolution has been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Alright, I will.
That is that you, I'm going to pull the paper, but that you make sure we get with like that, um, make sure he personally meets with all the coaches. The, the clubs are different, or different leadership, and discussing that with them, so all the kids, so all the coaches are I hate to see a basketball team do one thing slightly different than a wrestling team, or whatever, you know, so they're all the same shit music.
Alright, all those in favor of passing the resolution, say aye. All those, yes, say nay. Okay, now we're on to our second part, our second public participation. Or, or public comment. Each speaker is allotted a maximum of three minutes, for a total of fifteen minutes unless otherwise notified. At this point in the meeting, those interested in making a solid comment will be asked to raise their hands, so that the time may be divided equally. Each speaker will be asked to announce their name and address, maybe not so much their name, and indicate if they represent any organizations or agency. No person may speak one and once on the same subject, so if you spoke at the first public participation opportunity, you can speak again, but just not about the same thing that you spoke prior before. Those wishing to receive a personal response from the board or superintendent must complete a public comment form available at the meeting entrance, or if you did it on those sites. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
This has been regarding what I was addressing before, but just in response to some of the, I guess vaccination talk, I am concerned about, for example, let's just say person A has had COVID and doesn't feel that he or she needs to get the vaccination. Let's say that he or she plays on, I don't know, the basketball team. So that person who has had COVID and has a natural immunity that is probably stronger scientifically than the vaccination, that healthy individual is then going to be quarantined, kept out of school, kept out of his or her sport, when they have a natural immunity to this virus that ninety-nine point nine percent of the people survive. I don't think that that's good for the mental health of our kids. I understand that we are trying to keep everyone safe, and that is my goal as well, but some people are generally more, genuinely more concerned about the ramifications of the vaccination than they are the, the virus. And to quarantine kids that are healthy individuals is against any kind of quarantine rules of science that we've done in the past. And we are, we are punishing them. And the cases that we've had in Dexter have, not all of them, but some of them have been from vaccinated people. But yet we're going to punish our student athletes who choose, have the choice to not get vaccinated. I, as you can tell, I'm very passionate about this, this is a very much a concern. We are essentially quarantining healthy individuals, your statistics show from last year that these kids, most of the time, do not come up with the virus anyway. But yet we're going to send them home, and they're going to miss school, and they're going to miss class, and they're going to miss time with their teammates? I just, I just, I'm over it, I am, I want to keep our kids safe, I want to keep our community safe. I'm all for that, but I'm also for me being able to make choices for my own children, and other parents being able to make choices for their own children, and keeping them in school, and keeping them on their teams, and keeping them mentally healthy as well, besides the physical health. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, we are moving on to our next agenda item, which are board comments, starting with the education foundation update. Which I'll give you a quick update, the rivalry match versus Chelsea, we came up a little short. And I'm going to say we came up a little short, we came up three thousand dollars short. But here's the thing, I think this is the most money that I've seen raised for this rivalry. Chelsea raised twenty-four thousand ninety-nine dollars, and Dexter raised twenty-one thousand eight hundred and fifteen. So I think that both districts were winners on that. The teacher grants, the cycle of teacher grants were due yesterday. So that will be the next thing that the education foundation needs to discuss is going over which grants they will approve, and put that, that money that they are used to give kids. So that's all I have.
You know, it was five times what they did two years, they didn't have it last year, but two years ago, when they was doing that, Chelsea, I believe.
Yeah.
It's five times the amount of money raised. They trade before, four to five thousand last year, and it's five times, so it's a win for everybody.
Yeah, definitely, it was amazing. That's why I'm like, we came up short, but I mean, three thousand dollars was, I think, what we raised two years ago. So I thought that that was pretty amazing, and such a generous community that we have. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add to our board comment? Alright, so then, item L is information items that were included in your packet, including the board bulletin, scrap finance, and the updated social media guidelines. The next thing is to move into a closed session, which we will be motion for.
I move the board of education into the closed session.
And that's a rule, although, is it? Okay. All those in favor of moving into a closed session, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Alright, we will move to a closed session.